All right. So, calling our first ever, ever, North Bend City Council Virtual Meeting to order for April 21st, 2020. Want to provide a couple of comments before we get started into the regular agenda. First off, let me say that I have a second screen where you're all displaying for me. So if I'm looking to my left instead of directly at the camera, I'm actually am looking at you. And instead keeping my notes up on a screen with the camera. So nearly all of us are new to this system and I'm asking your understanding and patience with the technology challenges we may encounter. And certainly for those of us who are managing the meeting, we've done our best to try and accommodate a good vigorous meeting, allowing for public comment, but things can certainly go wrong. As a reminder, we are proceeding under the Emergency Proclamation and Executive Order relating to the suspension of normal rules of procedure. That said, tonight's meeting is being recorded or posting. We have received some written comments and we are looking to accommodate the normal flow of business as best we can, including verbal public comment. One change up front is that we are not going to do the flag salute this evening. I want to remind all public participants to keep their microphones on mute unless called on to speak. If a member of the public wishes to speak during either the citizens' comments or the general introduction item that's on tonight's agenda, you may either raise your hand, which is available to you in a virtual form as well as we may see it on screen. And I'm not seeing Dawn if there's an IM opportunity in this one. So that might be a possibility.
No, not tonight.
Not tonight, okay. So you'll have to do the hand wave or virtual hand wave and we'll be watching for it. If we experience any violation of this or any other inappropriate activity, that person will be removed from the meeting. Note, council and staff, well, I do encourage you to mute your microphone while others are talking to help cut down on noise and prevent audio interference. Also, of course, raising your hand during the meeting either physically or using the Zoom tool. And I'll do my best to call you in the order at which I see those with some help. And with that, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mayor, are you all right with me just saying that all council members are present?
I'm certainly all right with that. I can see them.
Yes, all council members are present.
All right, fantastic. First item on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. We have 13 items. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
And a second.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rosen. Was that Ms. Owen? Second?
Miller.
Miller. And second by Ms. Miller. Any comments, Alan? You're muted, Alan.
I couldn't talk because you had me muted, so I wasn't able to unmute myself was what I was trying to let you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all? Okay. Then all in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna ask for a show of hands. Help me, clerk, did we get seven hands there? Thank you much. Motion carries. It is unanimous. Next on the agenda is citizen comments, just as in normal, those will be restricted to three minutes. If you are on, I don't have visuals on most of our guests. If Dawn or Susie, if you're seeing a hand raised, can you point out who's got our hand raised?
Yes, Michael Thomas was first.
Okay. Michael, would you unmute him, please? Michael, if you're there, you've got three minutes, please, as normal, Nate, full name and address for the record.
Sure, no problem, Mr. McFarland. Thank you, theme council members, Michael Thomas here, 1231 La Forest Drive, SC. Glad to see everyone here and that we're holding some form of meetings. I did want to express some comments and concerns about both this and the last consent agenda. I'm very much concerned about the expenses that we are incurring on water planning and water rights and several other items. One of the items that was on the consent agenda was basically a blank check for $60,000 for a bunch of miscellaneous expenses for consulting services from Goldar. We are spending a tremendous amount of dollars on water engineering and complexity, the water system plan services from Goldar, the past wellhead protection, additional extensions and amendments to that this year, additional services related to updating the Goldar study, the variable frequency drive pumps. I mean, I'm very concerned that you're making water unaffordable in the city. And I would expect that any, that the city properly accounts for expenditures that are due from the ratepayers, stuff that's related to maintenance and operation, but also what are opportunities for recovering capital costs? Aspects of what you're asking Golders to do are related to expanding the water system capacity, so really in fairness to all the ratepayers and those who might be paying rates in the future such as envisioned with the Salal contract, need to look to recover your capital costs. And again, I'm also very concerned that, you know, this is a tremendous amount to expect your ratepayers to bear in this, in this area. And I'm very concerned that there's not really enough, there was enough detail in this latest item. Plus, I would expect, you know, even in the past where city council has approved far lower dollar purchase orders, I believe the extension for updating the wellhead protection was in a neighborhood of $20,000. So I'm a little taken aback that, you know, you're opening up basically a blank services contract with Goldar for, for this amount. If anyone wishes to address the question of how capital costs might be recovered such that, you know, the, these, some of these charges can be passed on as general facilities charges, I'd love to hear and answer. And with that, I'm done and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. We have several other members of the public. I don't see a mechanical hand up. Staff, see anybody if there's any other member of the public that they could click on the icon to raise their hand. Those that don't have visual.
I know that I believe Jean Buckner wanted to speak.
Yes, thank you. I think I'm unmuted, right?
You are now, Jean. Please name and address for the record, of course, in three minutes.
Thank you. Jean Buckner, 46226 Southeast 139th Place, North Bend. And again, thank you, city council, for hanging in there during these tough times. And I want to say that this is a new council and that you have the ability now to set your own path, to go your own way. You are not linked to history necessarily. And I encourage you to take fresh looks at a number of issues, including the water issue. Right now, in your new 830-page water system plan, which by the way, many of us have read or at least scanned, the city kind of bottom line comes right out and says in the executive summary that in a dry year, we would be out of mitigation water. We would not have enough water to mitigate this Snoqualmie. And all of the mitigation strategies that the city's been working have so far come to naught. And we've looked at them very closely and we don't think they will come to fruition. And therefore, we're sitting here as a city with one mitigation source, and that's Hobo Springs. And we can show you that that source is totally unreliable and we'll be able to prove that with no ifs, ands, or buts. So even in your own water system plan, you're saying that given a dry year, we simply don't have enough water to provide water to everyone and to fully mitigate the river. So I'm just throwing this out there. We will be getting back with you with some specific information that we hope that you will read and take to heart because we believe that the city is opening itself up to a great amount of liability in terms of developers that are going to come in and they're going to have these water certificates in hand and there will not be any water behind them. So we want you guys to take a fresh start at this and to look at what we've done. We've done a lot of hard work and we're really trying to save the city from immense liability from developers and others. So that's just sort of an advertisement as to what we'll be sending you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buckner. We have a few other members I see in the audience, although without video, so I can't see if anyone's physically raising their hand. Anyone else? I see a chat box. Just checking if we have anyone else raising a hand. I do not see.
I do not.
Give another moment for, just to be sure. I'm just gonna, just to be 100% sure, one, I'm gonna take the other guests one by one and just unmute and ask. Nikki, this is, got you, oh, I thought I did.
Hi, Mayor McFarland.
There you are. Did you want to make any comments tonight?
I, I am good. Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
One, two, three.
Be sure that you don't want to make any public comments tonight.
Hi, yeah, thanks for asking. I do, I do a quick question. So my name is Sean Malloy. I live at 949 Southeast Simmons Place for the record. I didn't intend on saying anything because I'm not familiar with the format, but I just did just want to throw out there that, and I apologize if there's a better way for me to find this information, but I just want to ask if there is a way to get updated information on what I've, I've heard from what I would call unreliable sources on some sort of moratorium or a hold on building. Just because, you know, I live, I live on Meloni Grove and I can, you know, from my house, I can see a number of different places where there's, there's construction and building going on. So I'm just curious where, where I can get more information about, you know, what, what the status of, if there is a moratorium and, yeah, what the status of that is.
Sure, Mr. Malloy, I'll, I'll ask Mr. Regos to get ahold of you tomorrow. He is our Public Works Director and he could cover that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have nothing.
Thank you. I think that covers everybody. I know why Mr. Talovich is on. I don't see anyone else. So that I think will close the citizen comments and open announcements, presentations and appointments. First one that I would like to do and I, and I'm pleased, let's unmute Mr. Talovich. We have an appointment to the Parks Commission tonight. Turn your attention to that item and Tim, since you're automatically at the microphone, I wanted to introduce you to that. And we'll start with seeing if any council member, well, actually, let me start by inviting you to introduce yourself to council and, and say a few words about your reasons for wanting to be a part of the planning commission.
Parks Commission. I'm, I'm very happy to be here. Glad to see everybody, although it's, it's virtually here. I can start my video, I see. I've lived in, my, my wife and I and our family have lived in North Bend since 1990. We're currently in the old Si View neighborhood. We have three grown sons. I work at Costco. My favorite activities out here are walking, hiking, cycling. I spent a lot of time in the rivers. We love the valley. And when I was told of an opening on the commission, the Parks Commission, that would be great. It fits into the things we love here. I see just a great potential and a very precious area here. And Parks is a huge part of that. And I'm just super happy to be on the commission and anxious to get going, either virtually or in person.
Thank you. And I want to just note that Mr. Talovich, of course, interviewed for this position. Mr. McCarty and I interviewed four or five applicants, I think, so far, for my short term, although we've had numerous openings on other commissions and gone through that. This one became one of the hardest because I felt that all four candidates were highly qualified and so it was a very difficult decision. And so I put it in Mike's hands and he made the right one. So thank you, Tim, for stepping up. Any council member has a question or comment, you raise a hand, I'll call on you. Ms. Miller, if you'll unmute yourself, you need to unmute yourself.
I have to be on, yeah, thank you. Tim, welcome aboard. Happy to have your enthusiasm and look forward to meeting with you virtually or whatever is the case, as it may be. We're excited to have you. Thank you for your.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Another, Mr. Garcia. Trying to unmute you. There you go.
You guys keep making it so I can't unmute myself. I feel like that's a conspiracy. Tim, I would just like to say thank you for stepping up and serving, especially in these strange times. It, it is an honor to have you come aboard. Your, your last name looks very familiar to me. I'm guessing there might have been a kid or two that came through my path at one point in time, so I recognize that you have, I've been out in the valley for a long time. Thank you again. And do you have any, like, a pet project or anything that you want to see get moved forward or just have, just wanting to serve to serve?
Well, don't get me started. But I, there's, I love the rivers and one of the things that I'm curious about is, is if we can reconnect somehow in the city. I'm also very active with a lot of the activities with Si View, the Parks Department, and coordinating with them is huge. And last, I think there's a great opportunity there to create some volunteer groups to, to mobilize, to get some of our projects done or to care for our existing parks. So those three things come to mind. I've seen them work in, in other places and I'm hoping to see if we can begin those discussions out here.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? All right, can I get a motion for approval of Mr. Tim Talovich for position four on the Parks Commission? I think Alan, you're, you're muted. Can I get an unmute for all the council members, please?
I'd be happy to nominate Mr. Talovich to the position on Parks Commission.
Second?
And I believe Mr. Garcia had waved his hand as well.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Garcia is constantly raving his hand.
I heard a motion by Mr. Loudonback. And the second was by, I think it's, they said Chris.
Yeah, it was Chris.
Mr. Garcia, okay. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hands up. Hands up, please. Thank you. I see seven. Motion carries. It is unanimous. Tim, congratulations. By the way, you have a meeting on Thursday night.
I, I understand that.
Now the time you've all been waiting for, at least all the council members have been waiting for with bated breath for months on end, the state of the city address. What the public does not know is, as I noted at council earlier today, in consideration of this is our first virtual meeting due to the pandemic and as this address was so delayed, I'm gonna forego giving a presentation and instead I submitted written comments. Those will be available as part of the minutes and we'll also get those posted up onto the website separately. I do want to note that pandemic aside, we delivered on a lot of fronts over the past year in, in bringing value and service to our citizens. And I want to thank all of our staff, both for that and for their amazing work during this trying time. I particularly want to call out my executive staff, the Acting City Administrator and CED Director Dave Miller, Deputy City Administrator and Finance Director Don Masco and Public Works Director Mark Regos for Yeoman's and Yeowoman's work to get me up to speed on city business over these past few months. They're a great team and work seamlessly together and I feel incredibly fortunate coming into office to have them. So with that, I will leave the rest of the city address to your reading pleasure. Introductions, AB 20053, first reading, ordinance amending North Bend Municipal Code Title 12 Regarding Parks and Trails. Mr. Miller. You're muted, sir. Hold on.
Let me, first, Mayor, as a point of order, I noted on the agenda I had, commission and committee reports, I assume you're going to skip those or would you like those?
Great point of order, sir. Did I blow right by those? Oh, I did indeed. We'll back up.
Yes, sir. We can, we can start out, and one of the things you've taught me so well is the art of delegation. And so I'm going to have Mike McCarty tell us what the Planning and Parks Commission have been doing lately.
All right, let me just shift over to that email. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So we all took a break, as you're all aware, in the month of March. But back in February, Planning Commission last met on February 27th. And at that meeting, they provided a recommendation or approval on the updates to the city's storm regulations. They also reviewed some proposed updates to the city's exterior lighting standards in North Bend Municipal Code 1840. So they'll be meeting on that subject again Thursday night, April 23rd. And we hope to get their recommendation on that to bring forward to you. In addition, Jesse Reynolds will be providing the Planning Commission with a presentation on the urban growth capacity and growth targets as they relate to the future update of the comprehensive plan. The Parks Commission also last met, last met back in February, on February 26th. At that meeting, they held a public hearing and provided a recommendation on approval of the draft regulations governing conduct or conduct and use of city parks, which is before you tonight. They'll next meet tomorrow night, actually, and we look forward to meeting, Tim, there. They'll provide a review and recommendation on onsite recreation improvements for the Kateview townhomes. And then also a recommendation on utilizing the city's 2020 share of the King County Park Levy as grant match for a grant for some trail improvements at Meadowbrook Farm that the CED Committee considered tonight.
Hey?
There we go. The technology didn't want me to unmute. The next one that we have is Economic Development Commission. Both the mayor and I met with them at their last meeting and had kind of an orientation session and talked about what, what items we should be addressing during the next year. We did tell them about the current state of development. Certainly, we have had since that meeting, significant interest by hospitality folks, notably Wyndham Hotels, and they're looking at a couple of sites and I talked to them this week. And we had some real good, I think, interchange with the, with the Economic Development Commission on really a big change of role. They've been concentrating on the brand statement and we emphasized the need for them to get involved in the, the nuts and bolts of economic development in terms of getting projects and initiatives going. We talked to them a little bit about our program that we have to evaluate the tax benefits of projects coming to the city, which we now are operating and commissioned that from Western Washington University. So we had a very fruitful meeting and we'll be meeting with them again, I believe, next month. And I want to put a good word in on, on the commission for some other staff work that's been outstanding by Bree Cavern. She's really stepped into a number of the roles that we had Lynn Hyde working on and she has blossomed and she has really improved our communication with the business community and really forged a great partnership, I think, with Jill in terms of our outreach and dealing with the COVID-19 situation, disseminating information to the business community about relief they could obtain, working with the Downtown Foundation that are doing some great things in terms of encouraging additional buying and commerce in our community. So I think we're going to get into a lot more nuts and bolts as we move forward with the Economic Development Commission. And I'd invite any initiatives that city council members are interested in that we could share with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. Loudonback, Community Economic Development?
Thank you, Your Honor. Can you hear me?
I can.
Super. With the Economic Community Development Committee met today for the first time this year, we had an agenda including Habitat for Humanity Development Agreement, zoning changes to increase housing affordability capability via $50,000 Commerce Grant via HB 1923 that was passed this session in the legislature. We also discussed an ordinance to adopt legislation for a sales and use tax. It's not a new tax. What it is, is it gives us authorization through a series of accommodating ordinances to get money from the current state tax. And we'd be getting that portion instead of it going to the state and we would use that for our affordable housing efforts here in North Bend. We also discussed preliminary drafts of the Water Conservation Ordinance, which may be coming forward later, and support pursuing an RCO grant for Meadowbrook Trail Project. And we had some good news today about potential for being able to fully fund that project and not having to do it in phases. The next meeting of the Community and Economic Development Committee will be on May the 19th at 3:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Loudonback. Mr. Gout Health, would you speak to Finance and Administration followed by Eastside Fire and Rescue?
Absolutely. So the Finance and Committee did not meet last month. So we have our meeting coming up this coming, the 7th? What day, Dawn?
Well, we did meet this month.
Oh.
Where were you, buddy?
I didn't have the, I thought I had the info, okay. Let me pull that up, one second.
We met on April 7th and we meet next on May 5th.
I don't have, oh, here we, okay. Oh, I've got the, we, we met on, you're right, okay. So there we talked about, we met on April 7th. We talked about janitorial service contracts. We talked about the IT Service Contract Amendment because of COVID and some other things and the fact that we were able to move very quickly. the fact that we were able to move very quickly from very little remote to a lot of remotes, we need a little bit more support on that. We talked about reviewing an HVAC system maintenance contract, and we're waiting for some information to move forward on that. We talked about the AV Project Contract Amendment and the first quarter budget adjustment. You want me to do public safety, or?
Would you go on to Eastside Fire and Rescue?
Are you on Eastside Fire and Rescue first, okay.
Are you also doing public health and safety? I have Mr. Garcia.
It's Mr. Garcia's, I don't know why that got, okay. That was my bad.
You're trying to take over everything.
You know, not trying to, but you know, sometimes you gotta get things done, right?
Mr. Garcia is no longer on the Get or Done Committee.
No, but I was on it with him, so you know, I had to use his tagline. I'm sorry, I had this all up, and somehow I lost it again, give me one second.
This is part of adjusting to virtual world.
Yeah, I had it virtually set up, and then I, from now on, I'm not going to support technology anymore because it's not my favor. Actually, that one, that was a pretty easy one. We didn't have one. We will be meeting this coming forward to talk about COVID, and the response is there.
I'm glad we waited for that, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Oh, Mr. Garcia. See if we can unmute.
I'm fully ready to go, I got my stuff together. We, the Public Health and Safety Committee, which does include Alan, met, no, it doesn't actually, use that, yeah, anyways. We met on April 14th at 4:00 PM on, I think we meet on Teams there, right? And we had an update from Nick and the Eastside Fire and Rescue, Nick from Snoke County Police Department, on some of the things that we are experiencing around town and the way things are different in their operations on a day-to-day, so it was the first meeting we'd had in a while, so we just kind of had the meeting light agenda just to kind of get a feel of it. But we kind of had all noticed, you know how much we could see the place around a lot more because everybody's, you know, stuck at home sitting in their driveways and waving at each other, so that was good, and they've done some neat things. Like Eastside Fire and Rescue came through the neighborhood the other day, a couple weeks ago, and wished the kids happy birthday that were parked out front, so just a lot of community building with these two groups, so that's it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rosen?
All right, we met on March 24th via this. So in the interest of following the mayor's lead in brevity, I will just go over the items that have not already been passed on the consent agenda tonight, so we had about seven items total, and the two items still remaining that we did discuss and are still open for discussion is a landscaping service contract with the nursery at Mount Si and Adopt a Street Program, both of those items are kind of put on the back burner for a little bit, just trying to get through the COVID-19 issues here first and foremost, and then we'll come back, circle back to those items. So that is all, and I believe our next meeting will be Tuesday, April 28th at 4:00.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen. Mr. Elwood, you've got two legs, so let you unmute yourself, please.
Great, thank you. Nothing to report, other than we have a work study coming up on the 28th, was that next week, I believe, at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, thank you.
Okay, thank you, I think that concludes commission and committee reports. Mr. Miller, thank you for the point of order and bringing us back to that, now we will go back to the introduction again of AB 20053, the first reading on the ordinance amending NBMC Title 12 Regarding Parks and Trails.
Yes, following in my tradition of the delegation and the great staff work that we see from Mike, I'm going to have him introduce this one, thank you, Mike.
All right, thank you. So as we have grown over the course of many years in the city, and as we will continue to grow, our parks will need increasing attention as we get increasing public use, so the only thing that we have to date regarding use and conduct within our parks are park closing hours and camping restrictions. So we haven't, up until this point, really addressed how the public uses trails, how we manage our parks, a number of issues, so the Parks Commission considered that, and we worked over the course of the last couple of months, taking a look at what some other jurisdictions do with their parking trail regulations, and have drafted regulations dealing with a number of issues, and noise disturbances, parking within parks, special events within parks, our park closing hours, we wrapped in from other sections of the code. In addition, we've brought in some other things that the Parks Commission was related working on regarding donations within parks, honorary and memorial park donations, addressing some standards for when those are provided within parks to make sure that they're fitting within the context of the park. In addition, we've brought forward a number of provisions from prior ordinances or resolutions addressing parks, so the naming of parks, our Adopt a Park Program, we've brought forward those into these standards so that they're much more visible and usable by the public. So the Parks Commission provided a recommendation of approval following a public hearing that they had in February 26th, and we brought that before the CED Committee, who'd recommended approval. Address any questions you might have.
Council have any questions before we move to a motion and public comment? Being done, I'll look to see if any member of the public wishes to speak on this item. Please, again, you'll need to raise your virtual hand. Being none, Mr. Loudonback, I believe this is your committee? Mr. Loudonback?
Yes. I'm sorry, you got me unmuted finally, sir?
Got you unmuted, I believe this is your committee?
Thank you.
Make a motion, please.
I will. 175 pages back in the agenda, motion to approve AB 20-053, an ordinance adopting amendments to Title 12 of the North Bend Municipal Code Concerning Parks and Trails as a first reading.
Second?
I have a motion by Mr. Loudonback, second by Mr. Garcia, discussion?
I think Mike covered it very well, but I would recommend to do pass.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia, anything? Mr. Rosen?
Yes, on, in our packet on page 181, where it's, what, 12.04.030A, talks about authority to post alternative and additional park regulations, and the way it reads right now, other agencies who operate or manage the parks jointly with the city may have the authority to basically post their own regulations for such parks. I don't have a problem with that concept, but I would like the city of North Bend to have the ability to have ultimately a say or consent on that before those additional regulations are posted or passed. So what I would like to do is just amend it, and at the end of A, I would just like to put the following, with the city of North Bend consent. That way, we have a say over anything that changes at those parks.
Did anybody have anything, do I hear a motion?
Sorry, I was.
That a motion?
Quick note.
That is amendment, yes, I'd like to amend that motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
I thought we were all muted, so, sorry.
So let me make sure that I have this correct. The motion is to amend 12.04.040 regarding.
030.
030. 030.
Correct.
And that at A?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Section A. To add the phrase.
With the consent of the city of North Bend.
With the consent of the city of North Bend. All right, any discussion on the amendment?
Could we just amend a couple other things, so, because Laundy doesn't like to do this on the fly?
They've got her muted, so she can't say.
It's killing her.
This is a first reading, Councilmember Garcia.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Kenyon and I will have an opportunity to look at Councilmember Rosen's legal language that he's proposing for second reading.
Any other comments on the proposed amendment? By show of hands, then, all in favor, aye? All right, that is approved, it is unanimous. And any other discussion on the main motion? Seeing none. I have a motion and a second to approve AB 20-053, an ordinance adopting amendments to Title 12 of the North Bend Municipal Code Concerning Parks and Trails as a first reading. Again, by show of hands, all in favor? Believe that's unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you very much. That brings us back to Mayor, Council, Administrator Concerns and Initiatives. I'm going to go by the virtue of looking at the screen here, call on Mr. Gott Health first.
Oh, gee, thanks. First, the biggest thing, just want really out to everybody, please, as we begin to open up down the line, please remember to be careful out there. This distancing is working, it is lowering the, flattening the curve for everybody, but our first responders and are working extremely hard and are pretty much overworked, and they're the ones that are gonna tell you they really need to support this distancing. So please, everybody, listen to what recommendations the CDC is recommending, and please follow those, it is important, utmost important for everybody's health, and also to support the first responders because they're overworked, and if we don't, we'll see another recurrence of this.
Thank you, Mr. Loudonback.
Thank you, Your Honor, I just wanted to say yes, thank you to all the first responders and everybody that's working so hard to keep us healthy, and I want to thank our own fellow councilperson, Heather Cullen, who is in that particular role, and Heather, thank you very much for everything that you do on our behalf and keeping us, keeping us healthy, which is a full-time job even when there isn't a virus around because some of us are, I tell you, we have bad habits on this council. Anyway, I wanted to also shout out to Ms. Don Masco and to Larry Shaw, and to everybody who threw this technology package together and made this possible. It was a monumental task, and you guys performed tremendously, so everybody who had a hand in making that happen, thank you, and thanks to the members of the public that participated tonight via the new medium. I look so forward to being back in person. That's it, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cullen.
I just wanna say thanks to everybody who really has been staying at home and staying safe, we can really see it at Harborview, our numbers aren't low, but they're not as high as we had been anticipating, and we're really grateful to everybody and all the people that have been sending us food and kind wishes and coloring our sidewalks, it means a lot, so we appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Mr. Garcia, I see you know how to clap on screen even, that is pretty cool. Yeah.
Are you gonna unmute him?
You're not gonna unmute him?
Thank you for those comments.
I did not mute him.
To himself.
Chris, you can unmute yourself.
Garcia, would you like me to unmute you?
There we go.
There we go.
You gotta get the sign. I'm gonna echo all the same thoughts and wishes, but I'm gonna ask people that see this to make sure that while we're practicing our social distancing, that we're also keeping in touch with our friends and loved ones, and if you have neighbors that, you know, wave at them when you see them out walking, or if you're out walking yourself, I think that, at least on the street I live in, we see a lot of walkers, and the people are super friendly, and it's uplifting to those people that walk by and you give them a wave, or if it's you and you're walking by and they give you a wave. I know that the times are hard, and let's try to make sure that we help lift each other up in these times, and try to keep our mental spirits moving in the right direction. So I'd like to say thank you, I'd also like to echo all the staff and mayor for getting this, these meetings going again, this is, I know, I've talked to a few of us, and this is back to a bit of normalcy in a non-normal way, but it helps us to get back to doing the things that we want to do to help move the city forward as much as we can in these uncertain times, so thank you, and then the citizens that came and joined our meeting and spoke tonight, we appreciate you taking the time to do that because it did make this meeting a better, a better meeting for all, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
Yes, everybody, I hate to be in the dark over here in the corner, but it's been really interesting and kind of crazy experience over these last few weeks, I just wanna have a shout out to Heather Cullen and many of the first responders that I've been able to be in touch with off and on during this experience, I'm just, my heart is just partly torn and inflated by all the love and the amount of, the amount of care that you give out consistently and ongoing and hour by hour, day by day. Also, I want to thank to our staff and Mr. Mayor there, and everybody for putting this virtually in success mode, looking forward to how we evolve in the future, and also thank you to the people on board that came, and the public, I mean, and made their mentions in their comments tonight, I encourage you to keep doing that, we want to hear from you, and thank you to all the first responders, that even the truck drivers who are transporting the goods out there, they have some stories that are a bit crazy as well, and I wish everybody to stay safe, of course, and when you are out walking, like Chris said, eye contact, smile, it's uplifting, I see it all the time when I'm actually out with my old dog keeper, and it's heartwarming, and we need that right now, so love the wall, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen.
Certainly want to echo what many others have said, thank you. First responders, Heather, thank you so much, and all your colleagues for everything you've done to this roster, keep us healthy. Also, I want to thank all our essential workers in town, you know, the folks at QFC, the folks at Portels, the folks at the gas station who are trying to do their normal job under very trying circumstances, and we appreciate the efforts there. And then, most important, I want to thank our citizens who have really stepped it up and have worked hard to keep everyone healthy and follow the guidance from the CDC, especially the kids in our community who certainly have gotta be having a difficult time not getting out, seeing their friends, and having that social interaction they certainly want and crave. I think everyone in this community's done a great job, so thank you to everyone for stepping it way, way up. And staff, great job tonight, Dawn knocked it out of the park, thank you so, so much, and I appreciate everyone making this happen tonight, great job, that is all, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Elwood? I'll unmute, I'll go the other.
He's asking you to unmute him.
There we go.
Got you.
Um, a, a lot of the same sentiments pouring out from, from me and our household for sure. Thanking everybody who's keeping our, our businesses open, our hospitals going, keeping people safe. It's amazing. And definitely the, the call out to the citizens, um, when I do venture out, which is rare. Uh, it's, 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 uh, warm and, and rewarding to see that. Anybody I come across seems to really be following the guidelines. Everybody's taking it seriously, which, which has a huge impact, especially to folks like you, Heather, at the hospital. We need to keep people out of the hospital. But also respecting each other's space. Um, it's truly amazing. That, that, that is definitely a big call out to the citizens as well. Um, thank you, Dawn, for getting this going. We do have to have some more one-on-one training for Alan because apparently he doesn't know how to function in this environment, but that's okay. Other than that, this is well done. Uh, I look forward to more meetings like this. Even when we get back to normal, I think I could get on board with this because it's kind of nice and efficient. Anyway, uh, everybody take care and we'll see on the flip side.
Mr. Miller?
Yeah, I'd echo the sentiments, uh, that I've heard tonight. And also, I can't believe that Dawn did such a fantastic job. For this evening particularly from Hawaii. I mean, that's really a long distance. And I, I too, uh, really appreciate what the staff has done. I've been in City Hall a few times. Dawn is there. Just about, more than anybody, I can tell you. Her staff is in there handling money, handling bills, keeping the business going. Suzie as well, that's been working tirelessly. It's very hard when you have all of these public record requests and. All the other business that, to get it all done remotely and people are just taking this seriously and getting work done. So the staff here has really stepped up. The Public Works guys, I see them around town all of the time. Not much has changed for them other than, you know, keep working and get, get more done with fewer resources. So kudos to the staff for that. And also I, I want to give a big shout out to the mayor because, uh, as he told me, he wanted to be mayor in a time of success when we were. Prospering and doing so well. And boy, he stepped right into a deep hole here. He's really done a great job. Been a pleasure working with him and, uh, and the executive team to get through this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Uh, I'm, I'm not going to, um, pile on to all of that. Uh, I'll, I'll leave it that. Great sentiments being expressed by council and, and staff there. Uh, and I subscribe to every one of those words. Uh, and particularly to the effort that went into figuring out how to just even hold this meeting. I think we'll get a few. Lessons learned out of this. I've, I've got a few and, uh, particularly this whole mute, unmute thing, we gotta get a little better handle on. I think we're gonna have to control Mr. Garcia's background switching, getting dizzy at this point. But I do, I, I do appreciate all of that, uh, and particularly, uh, and, and. Many have mentioned, uh, Dawn's role in making this happen and that is very true. And for cohort in this. Endeavor of, uh, Larry Shaw working there in the background. So Larry, I know you're there, so thank you for that. Uh, I just have a few other things. I, you know, I noticed I've got a, a, a mention to make here about a, uh. Historic, um, anniversary hitting us. And, uh, the juxtaposition to that was, I was looking, uh, at the. News headlines late today and saw an article that, uh, noted that we were on track. For being the hottest year ever on record since record keeping, uh, began. Or, uh, temperature-wise anyway accurately since 1880. That's an interesting, um, segue into that tomorrow marks the 50th anniversary of Earth Day. There are a few of us who not only were around for that first Earth Day, but actually remember it and did parts to it. Many of you were not. It is a global movement to help protect our planet and people. And to celebrate this momentous occasion while adhering to safety measures during the COVID pandemic. The city is inviting our community members to join the movement by cleaning up around their own yards and outside of their own harms, homes. Including picking up, uh, litter that may be on the street in front of your homes. This seemed like the safest. Endeavor that we could do as a community and keeping our social distance and staying within this odd timeframe that we're in. We would also like to encourage you to take photos of your efforts. To show the community solidarity and to submit them to our Communications Manager, Jill Green. And she's going to post them to a Facebook page in a, in a group to show what, what you, uh, did for Earth Day. So let's get out there, do some fun, uh, do some meaningful things for the planet. I, I, I just have to make sure that you understand that for me, it is a really big deal. You know, I've got an environmental bone in me and, and, um, the 50th anniversary is, is quite an event. Beyond that, for those residents and local businesses wanting to find emergency alerts, resources and updates, we'll remind you. That we do have, uh, on the, the, uh, North Bend City website, a homepage. Right at the top with the emergency alert button that you can click and it will take you to information about the COVID-19, a response. It's a lot of information. It's, it's, gets you other links to the Health Department directives, governors. CDC as well as local, um, items on what businesses are open, what restaurants are serving, how they're doing it. Other resources for businesses. There's a lot of information there, so please take advantage of that. Also, I wanted to note that with the increased focus on disinfecting high tech, touch surfaces. More people are using disposable disinfecting wipes and paper towels and with cleaning products. City of North Bend Public Works Department would like to remind residents that these types of wipes and paper towels are not safe for flushing. While toilet paper is made to disintegrate, these products need to go into the trash as they do not break down easily. And flushing those products, uh, are also not septic safe. And creates a potential for clogging the sewer lines, pump stations and could lead to costly repairs. Please do your part and toss those products in the trash. With that, uh, I think we're, um, ready to wrap it up. I do, uh, thank all of the, uh, public that did join tonight. It was a, uh, unique new experience. We do appreciate that you, um, were patient with us and took part. We do look forward to getting better at it in the future. And that thanks can also goes to all the staff who were there and ready to assist in the meeting. And provide information as it was needed. With that, I'll invite a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I think a second came out of Mr. Garcia. Who was the motion?
I did, Alan.
Mr. Got Health, the motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, hands up. Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Well done.